Hi, everybody. Welcome to September's meeting. Please stand. Let them leave.
(inaudible)
Over there. (laughing)
(inaudible) to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing I'm going to do is approve the minutes for both July and August. So, yeah. Who wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Does everybody vote?
Aye.
Aye. Good enough. All right. First on the agenda is Holly Property.
Good evening.
The Eversland property.
We're back. What I just wanted to do tonight, there was a consultant who has written up a plan for the planning board to declare itself lead agency. So we can go to the various alphabet organizations and get approvals. The Department of Health, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and whoever else I have to go to. We need to declare, we need somebody, hopefully the planning board to declare as lead agency. And I see I've got a great copy of the draft. Did you hear that? That's a lovely. So I think you have this with you. If I have, if somebody is new or something, just talk to me about it. I can briefly explain it if you want about what it is and what you know. Basically, that's what I was, it's not why I care, just see if we can.
Bruce?
Is this a, this is very fancy. (inaudible).
The mic's getting better than a witchcraft microphone.
Oh, that one's actually for singing in protest.
I was going to say that when you saw me walk in, you gave me a singing mic here.
Paul, it says if lost, return to Mariah Carey on that, so.
We'll do a quick duet picture.
That's right. This is our first, this is our million, this is our gold album coming out. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bruce Barber. I'm the town's environmental consultant. This project, as the board is aware, has been before you for quite some time. The first portion of this was to arrive at an agreement as to the density or count on the property through a stipulation agreement. That was worked and hashed through, and that agreement was made. And the second part was to develop a concept plan to start the site plan and associated permit review process. Where we are with it right now is that the site plan has ripened to the point where it is reasonably complete, and a long-form EAF has been submitted. And so, at this particular juncture, Bob is correct, the next step for the board to consider would be to declare your intent for lead agency. Also, prior to that, the board should declare if you agree that this is an unlisted action under seeker. Intent for lead agency is, as Bob alluded to, a document which will permit Vera to circulate the site plan and EF, EAF and associated documents to the involved and interested agencies. They then have 30 days to reply back with any objection to your desire to be lead agency. And at that point in time, if there is no objection, you would declare lead agency. That is, as I said, a 30-day process. Once it is out in the mail, that would, because if the planning board is going to be meeting the first two Thursdays of October, we will miss the 30 days with the second meeting. It would have to happen, the meeting in November for declaration of lead agency. At that time, though, however, if the board feels comfortable and we have responses to the memos that have been written to date, the board may choose to advertise for public hearing and move this along. Any questions? So, the first activity for you this evening would be just to declare the proposed action of the Holly Winkler Farm project as an unlisted action under seeker. You can just do that as a regular vote.
All right.
And then the second action would be on a roll call vote to declare intent for lead agency on that same project. Motion and a second.
(laughing) It's, I guess it, my head's not all over here right now. Repeat the first one again.
The first vote would be just a general vote, Mr. Chairman, to have this action classified as an unlisted action under seeker.
Okay. I'm putting in the vote to, to make this an unlisted, unlisted what?
Action.
Action. You're coming in really low in regards to seeker.
It's the mic.
Subject to coordinated review.
Subject to coordinated review. Like I said. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And then second action, which would be a roll call vote, would be to declare your intent for lead agency and authorize the planning board secretary to circulate the associated documents to the involved and interested agencies. So that would be a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
Okay. I'll make the motion to make us the lead agency in regards to this action.
I'll second it.
How does everybody vote?
Aye.
Roll call. Roll call. You got to name and vote.
Aye. Giancarlo Catucci.
Aye.
Simon Carey.
Aye.
Hugo German.
Aye.
Jackie Bishar.
Aye.
Richard Murray.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next on the board. Bruno Property. Everybody here for representation of Bruno Property?
Good evening, all. For the record, my name is John Andrews. I serve as engineer to the planning board. Bruno Property is a relatively straightforward one. Mr. Bruno had made application. He acquired a parcel of land. Actually, it's Mrs. Bruno, his widow. But they acquired a parcel of land from the town, and they owned a parcel on one side, and they own four or five parcels on the other. The town parcel was in the middle. Their desire was to consolidate all the parcels into one giant parcel for sale. They're, they're leaving the area. They, once they acquired, the manner and method by which they acquired the parcel from the town was somewhat confusing, and they were kind of directed they needed a lotline realignment. But because of the way the transaction occurred, they actually acquired a direct deed from the town. So they had ownership of all the parcels. For the purposes of consolidation, they didn't need to do a lotline realignment. They could simply go to the assessor, since they now owned all the parcels, and combine them into one. And that's what they did. So they, their application in front of you was never perfected, it never reached a ripeness point, it was never entertained by this board. There was some work on my part, there might have been some work on Bruce's part, but it was never processed as a complete application. As a consequence, they're seeking their money back, less expenses. And I would make that recommendation to you.
Okay.
And I think Vera had a resolution, but I don't have, I thought I had it and I don't, Vera.
This is the $417?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Hold on a second. Is that with all the fees and everything?
I think yes, exactly.
Actually, let me read it. The material pertaining to this matter was forwarded to the planning board attorney for his recommendation that I proceed with this project. It was also determined that a lotline revision was not necessary. Therefore, the application of fee of $250 should be returned to Mr. Bruno, Mrs. Bruno, excuse me. Also, an escrow amount was set up, an escrow was set up in the amount of $750 after processing all the invoices. There's $417.25 remaining, which should also be returned. And I would ask that you would put this in a form of resolution subject to vote.
Okay. So we're returning the escrow amount of $417?
No, no, 250. Sorry, S, but we have this to return as well, right? The 250 has to be returned.
You're returning 250, and then the unspent escrow?
Can you blind them both, or in the one?
You can combine them both in the same.
Okay, six, 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 six.
But it'll be for both application and the escrow.
All right. I'm going to make a vote in regards to combining both the 250 application fee and the $750. The 417 amount in regards to the escrow, what's left is $667.25 to be returned to said person, maybe Ms. Bruno. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
How do we vote?
Aye.
Good enough.
Good.
That's done.
Done.
Okay. Next one is Lungenetti Properties.
This is an application before you for an erosion stem control plan. It's a very simple application where the applicants have a backyard with a steep slope coming off of the side of it, and they are looking to stabilize that hill and bring soil in accordingly. John and I conducted a site inspection. There's really a very minimal amount of impacts going on out there. We asked, number one, that the applicant provide in writing where the fill has been obtained from. Number two, certifying any fills to be brought in in the future would be meeting all DEC requirements. In addition, this is such a ministerial act, we suggest at this time that the planning board consider waiving the public hearing requirement, having this go to administrative track. And lastly, there is a bond that was developed by the town engineer in the estimated amount of $1,500. And if the board chooses, you may accept that bond and refer that to the town board this evening for their consideration.
Okay. So, the motion, it's going to go a motion of waiving the public hearing and going to administrative, correct?
Correct. First act, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
How do we vote?
Aye.
Aye. Good enough. It's done. What's next? Next is the bond amount is 1,500?
So the bond, so waiving, and I think this go to administrative track?
They're already.
Okay. And the second is the bond amount for $1,500.
$1,500 to go to?
To the town, accept the bond and have referred to the town board.
Well, accept the bond, $1,500, and refer it to the town board in regards, because the amount is 1,500. I'll make that motion. We'll second it. How do we vote?
Aye.
Aye. Good enough.
Thank you.
I think I could keep up a second.
See what happens when you sit next to the boss.
Okay. Now it's Kent Self Storage Two. That's right. It was the first one. It was the first one. I remember the first one.
Is there time expected?
Yes. I think it was the whole 90 days.
Good evening, everybody. Joe Safreen, the principal site design consultant. Primarily, we're here for a 90-day extension on the site plan resolution that was passed by you a couple, six months back. In July, we received a memorandum, review memorandum, from Russ Fleming, who was recommend, who was referred, the project was referred to by the building inspector. We did some internal homework on some of the comments that were received. And working, trying to mesh schedules with, with the fire department to meet with them and go over, get their input on it. And we finally were able to, to get together. I actually just left there before coming here this evening. They've asked us to provide some additional information on the plan, showing where we're going to put a hydrant, stamp pipes, and Siamese connections. They were not interested in us extending the roadway, or driveway, rather, around the back of the building. They were satisfied with what we had shown. They're interested in a little more information on the building materials and the class of construction, which we're going to provide them with that information as well. So there's no substantive change to the site plan itself, other than showing where the, where we're going to place the hydrant and Siamese connections. So at this point, that's the only thing that, that we need to address, I think, to move forward on this.
Again, what had happened here is change in ownership, change in design. They were in before, and you granted a single 90-day extension. You're allowed to grant two. We granted one. We granted that one with the expectation that they would be able to finish the process. For a variety of reasons, the primary one being the fire department involvement, it kind of got delayed. The secondary reason, if you may recall, there was a Vbrook self-storage property that had a violation on it. There was some confusion, and it got leaked to this property. So this, this one went into a limbo. Long and short of it is, we're all back on the same page now, and based on the fact that we have resolved the fire department issue, we can move this forward. So Joe's office was kind enough to get us a timely request to extend it again for another 90 days. So you should have a resolution in front of you dated September 21st entitled Draft Number Two for Vbrook Kent Self Storage, Kent Storage Partners Two LLC. And if it's all right with the board, I'll just read the resolved. And it is now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Kent Planning Board hereby renews the site plan approval with conditions and the steep slope and erosion control permit for one additional and final 90-day period to allow for the proper review and consideration of the application for amended site plan approval. And be it further resolved that the waivers, terms, and conditions of the prior approval dated May 22nd, 2022 are incorporated herein by reference and remain in full force and effect unless modified herein. The conditional site plan approval shall be void if amended site plan approval is not obtained within the granted 90-day period, or in the alternate, the conditions of the original approval are not fully satisfied. Can't do that because they got to send, but we have to say it. Said conditional approval shall thereafter expire. No further extensions are permissible. And then it is the responsibility of the applicant, project sponsor, to obtain amended approvals or submit to the planning board proof that each of the conditions of this site plan approval and steep slope erosion control permit approvals have been completed, and the signature of the chairman shall be withheld pending receipt of a written memorandum, excuse me, from the planning board's engineering consultant verifying that each of the conditions and approvals have been completed. The final drawing shall not be accepted by the planning board without submission of proof of completion. The standard resolution of extension. So we, we need a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote, please.
I'll make that motion. Anybody want a second?
I've been seconding all night, so I'll just keep going.
I used to do that all the time. Okay. How are we going to vote?
I can do the roll call. Hugo German, chairman?
Correct. Aye.
Simon Carey, vice chairman?
Aye.
Jackie Bishar?
Aye.
Thomas Farone is absent?
Correct.
Giancarlo Catucci?
Aye.
And Richard Murray?
Aye.
Motion passes and carries. So, Joe, you're off to the races.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All righty. Next one is McMath Property.
It's a bond issue, right?
Yeah.
So this one, this one is an oldie but a goodie.
Yeah.
My, my job number on this is 2009.
Wow.
But anyway, Mr. McMath owns property on 186 Gordon Road. He obtained approvals for a single-family home, septic, some other improvements. He needed a erosion and sediment control bond, and he needed coverage under the stormwater speedies. The amount of work was fairly significant, so he was able to impose upon this board and the town board to permit construction and bonding of the project to occur in phases. Three phases, to be exact. Phase one involved the construction of the roadway, driveway, and an easement extending from Gordon Road up into his property. Phase two included the extension into his property. And phase three involved completion of the driveway up to and including the house site and all the final stormwater stuff. The bond, only phase one was bonded, and it was bonded in the amount of $75,685. Now, the interesting thing is, there was an agreement that was associated with that, which stated that the amount would remain in full force and effect for each subsequent phase. Mr. McMath has now come forward and decided, for a variety of reasons, that he no longer wants to pursue this project. And he has basically abandoned it and stopped, and he would now like his bond back. If you recall, some of the members of the planning board, myself and Bruce, made a visit out there in February, and the site was pretty, pretty far along. There were some issues. I identified some remedial measures. Bruce and I made another field observation visit last week, and we have received from the owner in the interim period a certification letter from Peter Scott, his engineer, and a long-term maintenance outline, also from Peter Scott. The owner also advised us that all the remedial work in our February memo had been done. He was correct. All the remedial work is done. We reviewed the long-term maintenance outline. I take no exception to the content of the plan. However, I think some of the, we do have concerns about follow-up and inspections. There was one issue that it recommended that has not been done, which is access control, which is a post and chain across the access road. I'd like to see that done. But even though it's only phase one, the site is substantially stabilized. Everything is good. The project is not complete. The bonds call for me to certify the project is complete. I can't. But what I can do is certify that the project has reached a point where it is fully stabilized. No further work is necessary to close down or preserve the work that was performed to date. I have a certification from their engineer, which says everything was done basically according to the approved plans, insofar as what has been done, you know, up to the only phase one. The maintenance outline has submitted, has been submitted. Again, as I said, I take no exception to the contents, although I think some of the timeframes with monitoring are impractical and probably need to be relaxed. Nobody needs to go out there on a monthly basis. Once, once a year with what's out there would be more than perfectly fine. So what we would recommend at this point in time is that the planning board consider the release of the bond currently held by the town and its replacement with a long-term maintenance bond. So in other words, releasing the 75 and holding a more, smaller, more applicable amount for long-term maintenance. We defer to and suggest that the planning board obtain the opinion of council before undertaking any consideration of the reduction in the bond amount. We also recommend that the engineer for the owner applicant revisit the maintenance outline and adjust the monitoring timeframes to be more in line with a mothball project. We also ask that he prepare a cost estimate for implementation of that long-term plan. Let him prepare it. It's his outline. And providing the estimate is reasonable and acceptable to the planning board, it would serve as the basis. What Jeff has recommended is that there would be an agreement among three parties, the town, Mr. McMath, and the planning board, that would in essence release the previous bond, relieve him of the obligations for the three phases, establish a maintenance bond, and then also set some conditions for what he needs to do should somebody pick up this project and seek to continue. And I wouldn't release the bond without having that in hand first. So Jeff has been involved, but he hasn't really.
Yeah, we were waiting on the email today.
We're, we're waiting on him.
Yeah.
So as, as a consequence, I think the smart thing for this board to do is, is authorize the release, subject to a suitable agreement provided by the town attorney. That way, we don't have to come back and bother you. Unless you want us to come.
The town attorney?
The planning board attorney, Jeff.
Okay.
That way, as long as everybody's good, you know, we're good with that.
We're literally, that's what I was going to tell him. If he was here, I was going to say, we're just waiting on Jeff to.
Yep.
I've got two questions. Two questions on it. Sorry, I didn't ask in the workshop. What, when we say maintenance, if the site is stable and nothing's happening there, what do we, I haven't seen the site. So what does maintenance look like in this case?
They put in some permanent stormwater treatment facilities. They actually have a subsurface cultech system that collects some of the runoff and discharges it, lets it infiltrate into the ground. They have a series of catch basins and pipes. And it's, it's basically been constructed such that the upstream pipes on the portion of the road that is incomplete, it's basically a gravel road that's grown over, have temporary inlet protection on them. So they're not allowing any water in. But the apron, and I think you were out there with, or maybe you weren't. The apron area is all gravel and stabilized, but there are storm drainage facilities in that apron. So water does get in there, has the opportunity to get in there. So what you would do is periodically, you would go out there once a year, you would maintain and make sure that all the protections are still functioning and not clogged and plugged, and that you would also verify the condition of the cultech system. So it's probably, once a year for inspection and once every, I think it's three years for the cultech system. So if you were to take a worst-case scenario, you're probably looking at a long-term bond somewhere in the vicinity of $7,500 to $10,000.
Okay.
But that's.
And then the other, other question is that if he abandons this project and we return the bond, and somebody else wants to pick this project up, do they start from square one, or what, what point do they start at?
Well, theoretically, they start from where they are today, but essentially, it's square one, because they would need a new erosion and sediment control permit, they would need all new facilities, you know, all new plans to make sure how they're going to proceed. But essentially, and that's why I would like that in the agreement, so that somebody picking up knows that they just can't go out there and start. They have to come back to the board and get new permits.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So Mr. Sun was given approval to construct a single-family residence on Westwood Drive, and indeed, he did do that. And he requested his bond for erosion stem control be released upon stabilization of his property. John and I conducted a site inspection last fall, and it was prior to the two-year term that is required for the erosion control bond to be in place, vegetation to establish itself. But at that time, the site was well-vegetated. We then went back out in February, and then a, and then notice of termination was issued for the erosion stem control permit. And then we were requested to go out again by Mr. Sun to finalize the inspections, which we did last week. Found the site completely stabilized, well-vegetated, well over 80% coverage of vegetative material, which meets the DEC requirement of stabilization. As a result, it's a recommendation to this board that even though he has not yet achieved the two-year waiting time, as outlined in the town code, the board has in the past considered a waiver of that requirement if there has been at least a inspection period through the growing season and through the winter months, and found to be fully vegetated, which is the case here. So at this time, if the board considers appropriate, it would be a release of Mr. Sun's bond in the amount of $19,700.
$19,700. Okay. I'll put that to a vote in regards to making a motion to recommendation that the town board release the erosion control bond in the amount of $19,700. And any funds remaining in the escrow account, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. How do we vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
That's it.
Great. And one last thing before we go bow the line, as the board is aware, but just for, for folks might be watching, Maracho Property, that was on for review this evening by the board, that was withdrawn at the request of the applicant. by the board. That was withdrawn at the request of the applicant.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Below the line?
Yeah, we're below the line.
Okay. Starting at the top, the Ailer's property, that the board has sent to administrative track. That's basically, the only remaining component is, that is being referred to the town board for the bond acceptance. I saw a communication from Vera today for that. So, that's all we're waiting for on the Ailer's property, to move that along. Nichols Road is being reviewed, as the board knows, by council. We're waiting to hear back from them with respect to recommendations on proceeding, as is also the case with Route 52 Development. Also waiting back from council on how to proceed on that application. Let's see. Kent Materials. John and I had a meeting out there with John Watson of Insight Engineering and discussed the items that were pending and were not in compliance with the approved site plan from this planning board. Mr. Watson is now in the process of correcting those items and will be notifying us at what time that it is corrected and move forward with that particular project to close that. Doherty Electric, I believe we've, John got materials last week from a surveyor, and we'll have an opportunity to review those and move that along. Old 17 LLC, I think that's perilously close to the finish line here, as is the case with Rocky Ridge, with perhaps some signatures on bonds left to be completed. Renary Property, also, I believe that's, Vera, did we hear back from town board, get that on that?
No, I'm going to send that to them for the next meeting.
Great. So, we're just waiting for the bond acceptance from the town board to keep that moving. Gaia Laca, we heard from Mr. Walters, the building inspector, that he has now heard from the architect on that property to see if that can start to move along. That had some retaining wall issues and some construction without appropriate permits. So, it looks like there might be some movement on that. Conversely, DEP in Seven Hills, we have yet to hear anything for quite some time on that. And as far as the excavation law goes, the town board has closed the public hearing, both public comment and written comment period. They have received written comments as well as public comments, which they are now considering. And they also extended the moratorium at the end of August for six months. Any questions?
Nothing. That's it. Anything else? One, one, twice?
Sold.
I'll make the motion. Close the meeting.
I'll second that one.
Aye.
How do we vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye. See you next month.